Would you come up and join us, please?
Council, roll call, please.
Yeah, really, get on with it.
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Bautor.
Here.
Councilmember Vertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Germany.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Here. You all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its first principle.
We have two proclamations to make this evening, and the first one is for honoring the Amateur Radio Week, which is June 21st through June 27th.
And I thought it'd be kind of fun tonight, since I'm an amateur radio operator as well, is to call in our guest, who's on her amateur radio. And so, just a moment, I'll call her. K-6 CPA, K-6 CPA, this is N-6 SLC.
N-6 SLC, this is K-6 CPA.
We'd like to invite you to our council chambers to receive your proclamation. This is N-6 SLC.
N-6 SLC, are you ready for me now?
Come on in, N-6 SLC.
K-6 CPA, clear.
Can we get that done in Morse code?
Robert, and I have their names right here.
I think it is on, thank you. Robert Richney, is that correct?
Yes.
And Sue Ellen Peterson.
That's correct.
And Public Information Coordinator for AARL, Pacific Division Santa Clara Section, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and Robert, you're District Emergency Coordinator for Santa Cruz County.
I am.
Great, fantastic titles. And so, we have a proclamation from the city tonight. Every year, we do this. We honor people who stand behind us on amateur radio and help in our emergency system. Thank you for doing that. Whereas the Federal Communications Commission licenses all amateur radio operators to provide public and emergency communications, develop and maintain a pool of radio operators, and promote domestic and international goodwill. Whereas the Santa Cruz County Amateur Radio Operators are known throughout the county, state, and nation for their outstanding dedication and commitment to safety and preparedness. Whereas amateur radio operators in Capitola and Santa Cruz County provide thousands of hours of volunteer support to several agencies, including CAL FIRE, Santa Cruz Sheriff's Office, Santa Cruz Police Department, the Amateur Red Cross, Department of Homeland Security, and National Weather Service. Weather Service, too, you do weather, okay. And the Salvation Army. They also provide valuable assistance during parades, charity bike events, running and walking events within our community.
And you don't have to pay.
Don't. That's what they call you, volunteer.
That's why they call us volunteer.
Whereas local amateur radio operators work closely with federal, state, and city and county emergency service organizations to provide volunteer communication services during fires, severe weather, natural disasters, communication and power outages, accidents, and other emergencies. Whereas the amateur radio community represented by Santa Cruz County Amateur Radio Club and the Santa Cruz County Amateur Radio Emergency Service have been actively supporting emergency operations centers, CAL FIRE, sheriffs, highway patrol, search and rescue, large animal rescue teams. What happens to the small animals?
They usually are pretty much in the back of somebody's car or truck or something, so they get out pretty...
That's why they call it large.
Yeah.
How big do you have to be?
Maybe a little bigger than you.
I don't know if I'd like that.
How many cows, how many calls do you get for cows?
Lots.
Really? Whereas...
Mostly horses.
Mostly horses, okay. This year's Amateur Radio Relay League Field Day exercise will take place on CAL FIRE Training Facility in Ben Lomond and UCSE East Field on Saturday, June 27th, and Sunday, June 28th. I, therefore, I, Dennis Norton, Mayor Capitola, do hereby proclaim June 21st through 27th of this year as amateur radio work in Capitola, California. And count on all residents to support the very important emergency preparedness exercise and recommend and recognize this tremendous contribution that Santa Cruz County amateur radio operators have made to our community. Thank you.
You are most welcome, and I thank you for the proclamation. I'm going to trade that to you for that, which is a little something in there. And that will tell you about our services and who we are.
Thank you, and I will share that with a council member in the community then.
Thank you, and I am also going to give you this because you may be receiving a phone call from the Press Banner Star Reporter to ask you a few questions and give you a nice write-up of this event.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming today. Our second proclamation goes to a very well-known community member within Capitola. And Mickey, would you come up and join me here, please?
Sports entry?
No, considering the proclamation, you get to live.
Real honored to present this to you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Fellow Capitolian. Okay, this is Mayor's proclamation designated June 25th and 19th, 2015, as Mickey Ordin Day. Whereas the United States Rugby Foundation is pleased to announce that Mickey Ordin is one of 12 2015 inductees into the U.S. Rugby Hall of Fame. Whereas the U.S. Rugby Hall of Fame and its foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to preserving the history of U.S. rugby, supporting the development of the game by funding programs for youth high school, college rugby, and individual player development. Whereas the 12 members of the class of 2015 were elected to the U.S. Rugby Foundation Board of Trustees after receiving recommendations from the Select Committee composed of the USFR Directors and Trustees. Whereas the class of 2015 is comprised of individuals who have made their mark in the United States Rugby and will be inducted into the Hall of Fame with an induction dinner which will be held in conjunction with the U.S. Men's Eagle Game versus Australia National Team, the Wallabies? The Wallabies, on September 5th at Soldier Field in Chicago. Whereas Mickey Ordin was an All-American Guard for the University of Oregon. Did you hear that? He was an All-American football player.
When they had 220-pound guards.
He also played rugby for the Ducks from 1960 to '62, and then went on to play in the Olympic Club and the XO Rugby Club, where he played until 1982 and was selected through those years on many All-Star International Touring Teams. Whereas Mickey was selected to start as the tight end prop against Australia in the United States' first game of the modern-era Los Angeles Olympics in 1931.
Since 1931.
Okay, Mickey, we go ahead and play for three of the next four Eagle matches, including against England, 15 games in 1977, Eagles tour to England. His latest test was a win against Canada in Baltimore in 1978. His career also includes the U.S. Cougars Tour in South Africa and Rhodesia in 1979. Whereas prior to retiring in Capitola, Mickey is a high school teacher and junior college football coach, as well as a rugby coach at Santa Clara University and for many college select tourist teams. He served as president of the Northern California Rugby Football Union and was the recipient of the prestigious Craig Sweeney Award, given to those who exemplify the highest standards both on and off the rugby field. Additionally, Mickey was an active volunteer at many of his children's at children's schools athletics and extracurricular activities. He is a participating member of the University of Oregon Alumni Association, the University of Oregon Football Alumni Group. Whereas during the 15 years of residing in Capitola, Mickey has served as an advisor to the Wharf-to-Wharf Board of Directors, an active volunteer, a coach at Aptos Little League, and a frequent volunteer on many community events. Therefore, I, Dennis Norton, Mayor Capitola, do hereby proclaim that June 25th as Mickey Ordin Day in Capitola, California, and call on all residents to clap for him. Mickey, I have a request for you. I have a request for you.
First of all, I'd like to have my granddaughter and three grandsons come up here. Because I have a funny story to tell you about these little munchkins. And Cole's wearing the jersey I wore back in '06, when we played against Australia. So, he's a rugby player himself, actually, and someday, hopefully, he'll be able to play as well. But the funny thing about this guy, these three guys, not so much Kelsey's, they play in the Aptos Little League. And some of the parents we run into, I was helping to coach Chase's team, and they says, "Oh, you're Cole's granddad." I says, "Yeah." And he says, and then I said, "You're coaching Chase's team and everything, and Cooper's?" And I say, "Yeah." He says, "God, you'll be here for the next 20 years." And I said, "I hope so." So, that's kind of a sidelight to this bunch. But Molly actually made me promise. Or else. No jokes. So... Or else, yeah. So, I've never really had a day named after me, which obviously is quite an honor. And I always say Capitola's a special place, this obviously is a special honor, and I really do feel honored being Mickey Ordin Day. The one problem, Dennis, I went down to Shattabook today, and Molly and I were having lunch, and I told the waitress, "This is Mickey Ordin Day," and I showed her my license and everything like that. I says, "Is there a free lunch involved?" She says, "Forget it," she said. Those words, "Forget it." You know, like, what's a Mickey Ordin Day without a free lunch, right? But there's good news. I also saw JoJo down at the beach, and he was collecting cans and everything. I told him about it, and he said he'd give me 10% of his profits today. So, that's a good deal. And then, one of the wheelchair guys that's going around giving tickets, he said, "You can park free today," so I figured. What the heck? What's a day without Mickey Ordin Day? We get all those rewards, what the heck? But it's really an honor being part of Capitola, knowing Dennis, and Mike, and Jacques, and everybody. It's Gail, all the old past people that certainly put enough time and devotion into serving the city, so they should be honored more than any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mickey, I have one more request for you, okay? Would the whole council come up here for a second? Could you please step up here? Yes. Most of us don't know how rugby works, but one of the main things you have to know is what a scrum is. And so, council members who do everything with their head will fit very well into this exercise. So, tell us what to do here.
They do have rugby for women, too. It's kind of a brutal sport. All right, rugby's football without pads. So, you have a jersey like this, some nice little sexy shorts. The girl and all the wives used to love to go to the rugby games because they'd see all the guys with those beautiful legs. And then, of course, the parties after are always fun as well. But the game is played, originally played here before somebody changed the rules and said, "Let's play a game called American Football." So, a lot of the rules are the same. You have a little wider field, it's 110 yards by 70 yards wide, so you have to be in pretty good shape in order to run for 80 minutes. That's what the game, two halves of 40 minutes. And there's no timeouts unless somebody gets injured or hurt, and they give you about 30 seconds for that. And then, but basically, it's a game where you have what are called forwards, that are like linemen in football. So, the bigger guys are playing that position, then you have backs that are similar to the backs in football. And everything's lateral, so you pass the ball, and you move forward, you get tackled, you can kick the ball forward, run it forward, and when you go across the goal line, you have to place the ball down in the end zone. It's called a try. And once you do that, it gets you five points, and the game goes on from there. So, it's similar to football, although a lot of rules that are certainly a lot different. But it took me about three years to really learn how to play the game before I knew what was going on. But once I learned it, it was certainly good for me. So, I saw the world. My theme is play rugby, see the world. I've been to South Africa, to England, Australia, New Zealand, throughout, yeah, throughout the United States, Canada, two or three times. So, it's really a great thing, although I don't have any after-effects. No, I'm just kidding. All right, do we have enough? You want to be the prop? No. Okay. You get the bigger guys are props, okay? Me and I are props. So, you stand there, and I stand there. The handsome, the efficient, the fast guys are in the middle. They're called hookers. No association, of course, no association. What we do is we bind together. We do this, grab the, grab the, grab his... Then we get down here like this, and then we run into the guys next to us. We got a pony team that's against us. That's a scrum.
I love it.
It could be dangerous. Oh, he had Defenso cartoons in the future. I'm just saying.
Okay, we're due. We're due.
We should make rugby the city sport. If someone recorded this. Thank you, Mickey Ordin and friends, for joining us. We have a report on closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Norton, members of City Council. There were three items on this evening's closed session agenda, which began at 6:00 PM. Those are listed on the first page of your agenda. The first, a public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. The second was a liability claim of Aspramonte Hotels LLC against the city of Capitola. The third was one item of pending litigation, the case of Schrodell et al. versus the city of Capitola. There was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. Sue, was there any additional materials received for this meeting?
Yes, thank you. There was additional material received for item 9F. It's a revised agreement for Public Works Inspection Services.
Thank you, Sid. This is a time, this is our communication, this is a time for members of the public to address the City Council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Presentations will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Individuals will not speak more once during all the communications. Is there any member of the public would like to address the council on any issue that is not presently on our agenda? Please step forward.
Hi, I'm Carol Erno. I've been a resident of this area for 40 years now. And I'm just here to remind you that I watch everything that's going on. We did have some tragedy four years ago over here, and I just want to let you know that my heart is still with it. I still would like, the same thing that changed continues, but it stays the same. I just want to remind you that my brother, my grandniece are still here, still waiting for some action. I know, I'd love to see this area back here turn into a park, like we discussed, saw, went to meetings for, and all of that. I do want that. I just do still want justice. And I've heard you call a lot of things, Michael, but never a hooker.
You didn't know me in New Jersey.
And I will tell your sister. Okay, but anyway, I just wanted to get that out there, that we're still here. We're still waiting.
Thank you, Carol.
Hi, my name is Darren Harris, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Friends of Monterey Park. We are a group of over 100 residents in the areas surrounding Monterey Park. We include families with young children, retired individuals, grandparents, students, regular working folk. We range in age from 20s to 70s. We're teachers, doctors, stay-at-home parents, artists, contractors, shift workers, nurses, real estate agents, cooks, librarians, therapists, and more. We are your neighbors. We are your constituents. We are Capitolans, and we love Monterey Park. Please listen to us when we tell you that a 6,000-square-foot multifaceted skate park won't work in Monterey Park. It will be noisy. The proposed skate park is a very poor fit for a residential neighborhood with a school and two churches and the rooms where our children do their homework and where people live. Monterey Park is a lovely green space, serves the needs of people of all ages. All of our children need green space to grow and thrive physically and mentally. Children don't need more pavement. Again, we ask that you please hear us. A skate park in Monterey Park will be a detriment to the lives of all the people who live near the park and to no good purpose. The city is already building a beautiful multi-use park at McGregor, which includes a skate park. Let's all work together for the good of all our children and make McGregor the very best park in Capitola. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to address the council? Are there none? The staff? City treasurer?
So, I saw something printed in the paper about the cost of this proposed project, and I wanted to see if we could get a report on the cost and what we might be looking at. Just the back of an envelope, numbers. I know you can't get specifics until it becomes important or it might be relevant, just to kind of help with some of the debate, so we understand the numbers. Is that possible? I don't need a report now. I'm just saying, maybe on the next agenda item. I know that it's requires...
You want to make that agenda item?
That would be great.
Counsel, okay? Thank you, Christine. We move to council. Oral communications. Michael?
I want to first commend the folks who are on the Mayor's Select Committee for bringing us a process for bringing the public out to speak. I think for the first time in the city's history, last night we had, or was it the night before, Tuesday night? We had a meeting where 100-plus residents came out to give us their input. That's wonderful. And that's what we tasked the committee to do. That's, that's wonderful, and that's what we tasked the committee to do. The Mayor's Select Committee was not for a position on the project or any part of the project. It was to give us a way to reach out to the people, and they were successful, and I appreciate that. On the same note, I am frustrated that our own Parking and Traffic Committee brought us a report some months ago about the parking structure being the, should be the primary goal in, in reducing traffic and parking in the village. And now I'm hearing the same people who are on our Traffic and Parking Committee telling us that's the last thing we should do. I'm confused. Either we're not understanding our committees, or we should disband the Traffic and Parking Committee, or we should ask them to clarify it, or we should come to some point of focus, because this is dividing the community, and it shouldn't. Clearly, the question that needs to be asked is, do we want or need a parking structure? That's what started the entire discussion. No one woke up one day and said, boy, we need a new hotel. That wasn't it. So perhaps, Mr. Mayor, we can have the Parking Commission, Parking and Traffic come and report to us again, so we can get some clarity, so we can move off of it. If this community does not want a parking structure, let's move on. If we do, we'll focus on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We will invite the Traffic and Parking Commission to come to the next City Council meeting. Thank you. Jacques?
So I went to the meeting on Tuesday night, and a couple takeaways. One of the takeaways is that there's a lot of people in Capitola that care about the future of the city. It's really obvious. There's different opinions. We're a city, we're a community. We're going to have different opinions, but a lot of people care about this community. That's really a special thing. A lot of people came to that meeting, they expected information, and they got it. The only criticism I had at that meeting last night is, and a couple of people told me the same thing, is that the fillouts, the little sticky notes, they asked for those fillouts before the information was given. Some people said, I would have changed my remarks. So what this tells to me, a big takeaway, is that the city has a responsibility, and I think we should act on this in a more effective manner, to get information out to the public about what the issues are. It's our job to make sure that you understand the underlying issues. It's your job as the public to help us, guide us, in understanding what you want. And that's the purpose of these meetings, to get information and to also give us feedback. We do this decision-making in concert with the public that has elected us. We don't do it independently. The final vote is here, but it is not independent of the citizens, the people who elected us to this council. Thank you.
I just have one quick announcement. At the last County Regional Transportation Commission meeting, they released the draft Passenger Feasibility Rail Study, and this document applies to the rail trail and its future. It will discuss everything possible that will go with that. It's a feasibility study that talks about ridership, costs, benefits, considerations, just to see if, if and how it could work. Not sure what the period is, whether it's 60 days or 90 days, but you can log on to the Regional Transportation Commission website, look at the survey, get some information. You can give feedback about anything on that report, and I encourage everybody to take a look at it, because it, major portion of it goes right through the middle of Capitola. Thanks.
There is a copy of that up in the lobby of the City Hall upstairs, if somebody wanted to check it out or see it.
Just, I wanted to remind everyone to come to Art at the Beach this weekend, if you're not doing anything, on Sunday from 11:00 to 5:00. It's a great opportunity to enjoy the beach and enjoy the local art and to support our local artists. It's a lot of fun.
And we have live music as well. I want to, I want to announce a new community service that's called Cruise 511, as you use 911 and 711. There's a new service called Cruise 511, where you can actually call in and get traffic conditions in this area to the minute. And the, that includes interactive traffic map of travel speeds, incident locations, traffic camera images, changeable message signs, construction lane closures, and then also you can do it statewide. So you can actually, on this application, you can say what area you're going to, and it'll tell you the traffic conditions in that area. It gives you alerts and detailed information about emergencies affecting transportation systems. It gives a free online ride match connection with potential car pullers or van pullers or bike partners. It has a trip planner, personalized direction for riding, the bus, biking, walking, and so if you give your starting point and you give it your destination point, and you give it the medium that you're going to travel in, it'll tell you the best way to get there, supposedly. Park and Ride, it tells you of park and ride lots and EV charging stations, those who have electric charges, electric cars. It gives you the location of electric charging stations in your area. It has, it has cost of driving calculators, and it has accessory travel options. So try it out. It's a new service that's sponsored by the Regional Transportation Commission, and it's in effect right now.
It's a mobile app?
It's a mobile app.
CRUZE?
Yeah, Cruise, you just dial 511 on your, that's all you have to do. Dial 511 on your, on your cellphone, and you'll go directly to it. Okay? Okay. We move the consent calendar, and the items on the consent calendar will be, will be approved as a bulk. If there's any item on the consent calendar that anyone would like to pull from that, from that item, please step forward and make that request. Being none, we move to Consent Calendar, the Council.
I'll move approval of the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move to, to item, we got 8C, we already taken care of that. We go with the nine general government public hearings. Consider a resolution of a levy on the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessment for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I would suggest that we combine items A and B as they're directly related. So that would include both the levy of the, considering a resolution for the levy of the annual assessment, as well as the second reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 5.10 of the municipal code.
Great, okay. Okay. We'll do that.
So as council will recall, at the last meeting, we adopted a resolution to set the hearing this evening. This evening, what we have in front of us is the resolution to adopt the annual Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Association's annual assessment. In addition, we have the second reading of the ordinance. You'll recall that we were removing some outdated information out of the ordinance, adding a bit of new information, revising the boundary map, and then taking the assessment categories and method of assessment out of the ordinance and including it in the annual resolution that was adopted each year. So this was the change. Again, we were taking out some areas out of the, sort of this, right up here on Capitola Avenue. They've come out of the, they'll be proposed to come out of the Assessment District, and that's a zoom-in on them. Most of those are single-family homes. There's only, I think, one or two, relatively limited number of commercial properties in that zone. And so the recommendation this evening is to adopt the ordinance, making the changes to clean these things up, and in addition, adopting the resolution that'll levy the annual assessment. And I'm available for questions.
Questions, staff? We're, we'll vote separately on these, but we combine the discussion now, is what you're suggesting.
Yes, I do.
Is, is there a member of the public who would like to address this, a member of the BIA, to address this issue?
Who's president this week?
Come on, he is Gary. Come on, Gary.
Gary, what's, I think I'm president of the BIA. So I'd be happy to answer a question anybody has about the submissions that we've made to the council.
Yeah, I had a question. It was explained that some, it was explained some of the areas that are being taken out present some problems to the BIA. I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that. They didn't feel like they were part of the business area, or?
Are you talking about the, the map?
Yeah, the excluded areas, the ones in red.
I think it's been a conversation for the last several years, that the area in red that you see there doesn't really benefit from the actions of the BIA, well, only because it's up this, this, you know, this side of the, of the C Hall. So therefore, in fairness to the people there, we thought it'd be fair to take them out of the district and combine it to the really solid village. And I think it's in agreement with the people in the red area, as well as obviously the membership of the BIA itself.
Okay. One clarification. Thank you, Gary. Michael?
Gary, the BIA has done some wonderful work since its formation. Is there, you have any ideas about how to inspire merchants who aren't active in the BIA to get involved? Because it seems like there's, there's power in numbers, and I've, I know that you've carried a lot of the load, as has Karen. So, any thoughts?
Thank you. It's something we face every year, obviously, and there, like every other committee, there's a few people do all the work, and all this benefit, which is great. That's not unusual. I think the real key issue is, you may already know, probably know, that most of the members, most merchants are not residents of Capitola. And so I think that as a group, we kind of feel like we don't have a voice, even that we can't vote, obviously, because we're no, I was a local, no longer. Now, I think that's the biggest issue. I think if we get people to feel more like they were a part of the community, not this isolated group that can't vote, that have little authority. Now, we've made some very good headway. I think we started last year with Ed being the representative of the council. He attends all our board meetings, all our membership meetings, and all office meetings. So, and we've truly given him a lot of feedback. And I would hope, I'm sure he's taken those thoughts to the council. And I think if we can see some of the things happening as a result of those comments, not that we are a unique group, as everybody liked, I think, Jacques a minute ago, are a community of people that have different ideas, we all do, and so we all can't be getting our number-one priority done. But I think by seeing that there's some progress that what we submit, I think people like to see and say, no, we're not going to do that. No, we don't have the money to do that. No, we don't have the time or the people to do that. We can live with those things. But yeah, those are good ideas, and we're going to try and do those things. I think that we made tremendous progress. I can speak myself, but I hope all the members feel the same. When we made the sidewalk refurbished and wider on Espinon, a great progress. I think we're doing that in a few other places. We have already do some more. That's, that's great. So I think those, the feedback that, hey, guys, don't just complain that you don't get things done. Let's talk about what you, what we did do, and to make things better. But anyway, the hard part is getting this communication going back and forth. We've had, the last several years, either the police chief or the C manager or the city mayor, not the current mayor, I believe, but I'm trying to think who it was.
Sam.
We can blame, I guess it was Sam.
Sam.
We can blame him. But anyway, speak, and that does provide us with more feedback. So the right answer is open communications. That's how we can work better together.
And congratulations on being one of the two permitted owners of legal sidewalk signs, you and Zelda's. You look a lot more in reality than the mock-up, sorry, no offense, Ed, but you look great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Gary, you know, I'm a great supporter of the businesses downtown and businesses in Capitola in general. But count me in when you have discussions about issues that are related to the things that you feel that are important to the city of Capitola and to the Espinon area of the city. So please count me in, and I'm available to come to your meetings and hear what you have to say also.
Sure. I'll provide you the dates and times and locations, and I appreciate your look into it. I say, I think, by the way, to follow on a little bit twice earlier, I think we have to find a balance, and I know you all strive to do that, between different factions and different ideas and different needs. And, and, and the big challenge right now is how to do that. And I think that, again, if we merchants feel out of balance, it's like, it's fine for people to say, we want Capitola to be the same old place that we came here 30 years ago. Well, that's called stagnation, in my view, and we have to realize that it's the merchants, their real investment, real dollars, that provide for the vitality and growth of this community. And we look at the sponsorship of the BIA Wednesday night concerts, or the Bon Jour Festival, whatever, that you're going to find out, it's the merchants that put up the money, real money, that makes that happen. So if you want the city to be vital, to mean something, then we have to make sure that we at least do a fair balance of how we treat the merchants versus how we treat everybody else. That's my two cents.
Those are good comments. Thanks. Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
You all said?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. What is the wishes of the council?
Move the staff recommendation on the, let's see, on the BIA resolution?
Okay, we're going to do, we'll do the motion separately, so.
Right.
That's not item 9A, consideration of resolution to levy Capitola Village and Wharf Businesses.
Correct.
Okay, the motion, is there a second? Okay. I think we have to roll call on this, Sue.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Botter?
Aye.
Councilmember Vetrain?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Norton?
Aye. We move to item 9B, which is consider an ordinance amending Chapter 5.10 of the municipal code pertaining to the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area, and that is, is there a motion?
I will move the ordinance.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Gary, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, wait, this guy's got to say something again. Oh, we're going to reconsider the motion.
No, this time, thank you very much, the council, and thank you for your support, and both, the whole council, as well as Jacques and Ed Herbin. Thank you.
Thank you. We move to item 9C, which is an update from PG&E regarding the May 12 outage and pending Capitola projects. Joe Foster, please.
Thank you, Mayor Norton, council members, for having me here tonight. I have to admit, since my daughter was born last year, I've had two nights out since then. This is one of the two. So a night, yeah.
Way to go, crazy Joe.
A night on the Capitola, spending it with you, all you fine people, is a great night. So, well, oh, thank you very much. Thank you, yeah, yeah. So thanks again for having us here. My name is Joe Foster. I'm the local government relations representative of PG&E Central Coast Division, which Santa Cruz County is a part of, along with San Benito, Monterey County. So tonight, I wanted to give you an update on a couple of projects that we've got going on in the community, but also touch on details related to the May 12 outage that happened in the Capitola Shores neighborhood. So that's what I mainly want to focus on. I brought with me Chris Waddams, who's our electric planning supervisor. So if there are any other questions that I can't answer, Chris should be able to answer, and if we can't answer it, then we'll get the answers for you elsewhere. So, starting off about the May 12 incident, I wanted to recap a little bit the communication that we've had with the city since then, and then what's happened since that initial communication happened. So on May 12, when we had the outage reported, there was outreach from us to the City Council and to the administration, reporting the outage, and saying, here's the duration, this is, these are the numbers of people that are out, and here's the time that we estimate that service will be restored. And it wasn't, it wasn't extended outage due to the complexities of it. After that, we, we were able to analyze what exactly transpired during the event, and we provided a little bit more detail to the city manager about some of the damage that was caused by the voltage increase that happened during the event, and we reported that on to the city manager, who I believe did provide a briefing to the council on that. So backing up, let's go over just a brief recap of what happened. So early morning on May 12, there was a higher voltage line, a 21 KV voltage line, that became dislodged due to something flying through the area. Witnesses said they saw a group of ducks flying through. We can't confirm that it was ducks or not, but something flying through the area bumped the line and caused the line to fall into a lower voltage 4 KV line. And when that happened.
Joe, excuse me, for the rest of the council, would you explain what 21 KV and 4 KV mean?
Well, kilovolts and kilovolts.
Thousands of volts.
Right.
Okay, good.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah. So basically, a higher voltage line into a lower voltage line. And when that happened, it sent a voltage increase surge to a number of the homes that were connected to that line. So it caused an outage, and when it started, there were roughly 850 or so that were out of power. We got that number down to about 550 by midday. And during the day, we were able to continue ticking that number down. It took us a little while to do that, because when that voltage increase happened, it did cause panels on the homes that were impacted to fail. So, in the name of safety, to make sure before we went through with restoring power to each one of those homes, we had our men in the field go door to door, check the equipment to make sure it was safe to re-energize, talk to the people if they were home, and then go one by one to re-energize the homes. So there was safety in mind, first and foremost, to make sure that everything was properly in place before re-energizing the homes. Now, we were able to get everybody restored by early evening. And what transpired from there was, we did determine that there were about 40 or so meters that were damaged due to the voltage increase that went to these homes. Those meters were taken in by our claims department, analyzed, and of those 40, there were roughly six or seven that were damaged beyond repair. Now, of those 40, we have had 40 individual claims that have come through from residents in that area. Of those 40 claims, all of them have been processed. Most of the residents have received compensation for any damaged appliances or equipment inside their homes. There have been a couple that have not, and they're pending just a little bit more information from the customers. So first and foremost, when we were addressing this outage, it was all about safety, making sure that everybody was ready, properly set to be able to be re-energized in their homes. On the back end of it, it was all about making sure that the claims process works smoothly, and that the residents were able to get compensation for any damaged appliances or equipment that they had in their home, which was minimal. So, that's really where it stands from the May 12 outage. And I do have two more things that I would like to touch on, but we can take a couple of questions on that, if that's how you would like to structure this.
Another question. So I received a number of phone calls and emails on this. And so I actually went down to some of the areas that were affected and talked to the customers. And I do have to say that the response was prompt. One lady was like totally stoked, because her refrigerator got replaced, I mean, not the refrigerator, the contents, excuse me. So she was quite happy with the response. But you did mention there are a couple claims pending. So are you being proactive to try to work with the customers? Are they sort of holding back? They just don't know? What's the nature? Because I don't want it to be onerous for them to provide this information when it's really a PG&E issue.
So our claims department is actively working with each one of the residents that did submit a claim. Now, generally speaking, we do see some claims that come in a little later sometimes, just because people haven't had time to get around to it. It really wasn't that impactful to their daily lives. So our best thought on this is that maybe some of these people, this wasn't an appliance or something that they use on a regular basis, and that we're just waiting for some documentation on exactly what it was that was damaged, rather than just a filled out form. We need some backup information from them. So our claims people are in constant contact with these folks. Now, I do want to remind everybody, you all and anybody that's watching, that there is a three-year window to be able to file a claim. So, and we did go around that evening, our claims folks did go door to door that evening on May 12, to make sure that all the houses that were out, even if there was no chance of damage, that they knew where they could file a claim, whether online or a form that could be filled out and mailed in.
Some of these may be vacation houses. Did you come across any of those? I mean, they wouldn't even be there to know that there was a voltage outage.
Right. I'm not aware of any vacation homes that were impacted. But I do know that each one of the homes that were impacted by the outage, there was communication, either a door hanger left behind, mail sent to them, or a call placed to them.
Okay, thanks.
Joe, I have a couple of questions. Were all of the meters that were damaged, were they all smart meters? Or is there, would this have happened on a regular meter, the same as it happened with a smart meter? Or is this unusual for...
So really, the panels were actually what were damaged, because those were what protected the homes from taking on too much of the surge. And the meters that were attached to the panels were actually just the byproduct of the damage that was inflicted to the panels. All of the meters that were attached to the panels that were affected were smart meters. But regardless of it being a smart meter or an analog meter, the same thing would have happened.
So is there actually a safeguard to keeping this from happening again? Or is this something that you have to deal with on a regular basis of, you know, failing power lines coming on down on a lower voltage? Is that...
So because Chris was so great to come down with me tonight, I'll let him talk a little bit about the wire-down program. Would you like to say a word or two about that?
Yeah, the, in Santa Cruz County, we're spending, you know, probably upwards of a million dollars over the next five years annually. And we have a program system-wide where we're, you know, it's both reactive and proactive. We're reactively going out and looking at older conductor. And we do things like infrared analysis to see if you got heating. When wire starts to fail, you get hot spots in the wire, especially where there may be some type of splice where it's bumped together. And so we, you know, reactively are going out to any place where wire is failing and falling. And so we go out there and immediately are putting in jobs and securing resources, both capital and manpower, to get it reconducted. And then, you know, the proactive part is we're, we've set up a pretty extensive infrared program, where we're going to infrared every mile of PG&E line, which is a pretty large undertaking. I mean, in this county alone, you're, you know, you probably have over 10,000 miles a line, you know, going off in different directions. So it's, you know, from that, we're getting various locations where we're replacing some of the older conductors. We've also made some standards changes, you know, the type of wire we install. We decided that, you know, a lot of our wire will be up on the poles for 40, 50 years, and not have any problems whatsoever. But due to corrosion and pesticides and, you know, salt air, fog, those types of things, we're seeing some of that real old conductor starting to have problems, the smaller gauge. So we had a standards change made. And so now we're going to bigger gauges of wire that are much more robust and stand up to the elements a lot more.
Are you the service rep representative, Chris, for this, for Capitola area? Is this your area right here?
Well, I'm not a service rep. I'm an electrical engineer.
Electrical engineer, okay.
Yeah. So I basically have a staff of eight people. I'm the supervisor for the...
If you were to rate the infrastructure in this area here, if you're on A, B, C, D, what would you rate it?
Oh, for Capitola or for Santa Cruz?
Capitola area. We can only talk about this area, really.
It's generally, you know, it's probably an A or B.
Okay.
Michael?
I think it's also safe to say that this situation, where you have a higher voltage transmission line above a lower high voltage distribution line, does not exist everywhere. That's a very specific situation that occurs only in certain overhead right-of-ways, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not something where every pole has that voltage disparity?
Okay. But yeah, as Chris was saying, that we're proactively going out and looking at these lines to make sure that they're secure, stable, and that if a group of ducks fly through, it's not going to disengage anything.
Dennis, I thought of one question. One of the speakers at our last meeting said the old meters didn't blow up, that they were told by an employee, PG&E employee, I thought they said that the PG&E meters don't blow up, that the old ones didn't blow up, that this wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been smart meters.
That is not, that's not what I've heard. And that's not, not to our internal knowledge, that that's not correct.
It's not what we observed either. In my company, we observed meters that had gold rings on them, not coming out. But that's because they had a substantially more mechanical attachment to the main meter box, you know, the locking rings than the little silver lightweight ones. So...
Is there any members of the public who'd like to address us on this issue? Thank you for your presentation, and stay in touch with us. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. I did want to mention two more things, though, that were also on there, and really quickly, so I won't take up too much time. So we are continuing our pipeline safety project and hydro testing our gas transmission line throughout Santa Cruz County. It's a continuation of the work we did in 2014. And so we will be doing strength testing of the gas transmission pipeline running through portions of Capitola. That project will mobilize in mid-July, and the actual testing will take place the last two weeks of August. We will be holding an open house for the public, and for anybody that has any questions or looking for more information on the project, July 8, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, at the Santa Cruz County Association of Realtors' Office, 2525 South Main Street in SoCal. It's really close to one of the areas where the work will be done. I know it's right outside the city limits, but it's still primarily for the city project. And any other questions, you can always direct it to me or to anybody else here locally.
Joe, can you update us what's happening on River View Terrace right now with the gas lines?
I don't have any information on that ready right now, but we can check in about that at a later time.
I think that the residents are in touch with PG&E, but
They are.
It'd be good to have a little update back to us.
Yeah, I know that our customer impact specialist Denise Fink was talking to me about it earlier today. So I know that there's some circling back that needs to be done with the residents up there. And then, any other questions on the hydro test? So the last piece of it is that we're going to be converting all PG&E-owned streetlights in the city of Capitola to LED. So as part of a safety initiative and just overall energy efficiency, we'll be coming through later this summer. And hopefully, you won't even notice to be here. We'll have it all changed out, and you'll see the nice, beautiful white light, rather than the kind of yellowish light out there under the lights. So it'll be great.
Joe and Chris, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We move to item 9D, received presentation regarding chapter 12.12, the Capitol Municipal Code, regarding community tree and forest management. Rich?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As you recall, at your April city council meeting, you requested that staff return at a future meeting to discuss the tree ordinance. So this evening, I'll have a brief presentation, just to give an overview of the ordinance. By way of background, the original tree ordinance was adopted in 2004 to consolidate a number of regulations that were in various sections of our municipal code related to tree protection and maintenance. The ordinance is intended to protect and enhance the city's urban forest, maintain trees in a safe and healthy manner, and it establishes penalties for unpermitted tree removals, and also established a community tree fund. The ordinance was most recently amended in 2011 to increase penalties for removing significant trees in the community, to establish weekend enforcement procedures, and to clarify some findings for tree removal permits. The ordinance basically has four parts, tree planting, which is focused on enhancing the city's urban forest, and establishing the tree management fund, the tree maintenance and protection, which focuses on heritage trees and the designation process, standards for pruning and maintenance, and standards for protection during project development. There's also a section on tree removal and replacement, which pertains to permit requirements to remove trees, the standards for tree replacement and in lieu fees, and then finally, the section on enforcement evaluation to establish penalties and authorities. So in Capitola, a tree permit is required to remove virtually any tree which is six inches or greater in diameter at 40 inches above the grade. To obtain a tree permit, typically, you have to have one of the following findings to be made, that the tree is dead, diseased, or dying, that it's causing substantial property damage, or that it poses a safety hazard. There are a couple exceptions in the code. For fruit trees, don't require tree permits, or trees that are removed in conjunction with a development project. Trees that are permitted to be removed are accompanied by a minimum two-to-one replacement requirement. If replacement's infeasible due to site constraints or some other hardship, property owners can pay an in lieu payment in lieu of the replacement. And a replant requirement may be waived if a property already has a 30% or greater canopy coverage. In addition, we do collect a $500 security deposit to ensure that planting actually does occur. On average, we see about 30 to 50 tree removal permits annually. In terms of enforcement, it's split up a little bit amongst the city departments. Community Development handles all the unpermitted tree removal complaints that we receive, disease and hazardous tree complaints are handled by Public Works. And then on the weekends, the police department handles the complaints until Public Works or Community Development return on Monday. Unpermitted tree removals in the code, both property owners, contractors, and arborists could be subject to penalties. Tree replacements are typically a requirement for illegally moved trees, or if there's not room, we do collect in lieu fees. And in addition, we have the ability and do fine people that remove trees without a valid permit. Any enforcement actions that staff takes are appealable to the planning commission and city council. And on average, we probably see two to four tree violations on a typical year. Some of the issues that we've heard from the public, just briefly, you know, we do get complaints sometimes that the ordinance is too regulatory and punitive. Contrary to that, we also hear complaints that the ordinance is too lax in forgiving to violators. Most recently, over the last year or two, we do receive complaints now and again about replant requirements, giving the water use in the current state of the drought. From my perspective, in terms of administration, I think, you know, if and when we were ever to overhaul this ordinance, I think the fine process could be simplified and made easier to administer. And the ordinance itself, if you've had a chance to look through it, it's very long, it's wordy, and in my opinion, overly complicated. I think we could streamline it, reduce the amount of words, and still have an equally effective ordinance. And we do have the tree ordinance update in our work plan. However, it's a little bit further down the pile, behind our zoning code update, historic preservation program, design guidelines. But of course, at your discretion, we can always shuffle our priorities around. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Why did we exclude the fruit trees? I don't remember at the time what the discussion was. I know you weren't here at the time, but was it because they don't have as long of a life as other trees, and tend to need to be replaced more, or die more frequently?
And they tend to be replaced by the owners on a regular basis as well, certain ones.
Yeah.
And the ones that do produce are usually prized by the owners, and they're not cut down, you know, frivolously. I think that was the thinking behind it. Does the police department have a list of the permitted tree removals in process at any given time? What I'm thinking of is a weekend complaint, a community development officer, or a police officer is called, or one of the regular PD. They need something to go by to figure out whether the people with the chainsaws on the weekend are acting permitted or unpermitted.
That's a great comment. It's something we don't do, but I think it's a point well taken. Yeah, it would help internal communication.
Certainly help the PD.
Yep.
They should post the permit, like a development permit.
Well, they get put into a very dicey situation, having to walk up to a resident on the Saturday and go, get a permit?
Get a permit, please.
Right.
When they should know.
Point well taken.
Also, there's, there are trees that are either in our own right-of-way, or in, well, it used to be Southern Pacific. Anyway, up on Depot Hill, it's one area where eucalyptus trees are getting a little dangerous. And I'm thinking more like fire. And I'm seeing a lot of them near PG&E lines and transformers, which I wish I had thought about it when Joe was here, because they're supposed to trim those away. But it seems like the city can be a little proactive with our own trees as well.
Yeah, the code does have provisions for, you know, trimming the trees, clearing them for utilities, or moving them if they're hazardous, dangerous. Certainly, eucalyptus trees, I think, are a little more prone to falling and being widow makers. So...
Especially with the Fourth of July coming up on Depot Hill. Those two words scare me always.
The other issue that we have is, there's a couple areas in town where the tree roots are coming up through the pavement, where, you know, people park and walk, and they're going to become tripping hazards. So there's one on Pine, and then there's a couple other that I know of, and I'll give you those addresses, where we should probably go in and fix the road, you know, level it out, cut the roots, or whatever, and then really probably do something about that tree, those trees, because they're problems. They're uprooting the little sidewalk areas that the residents have, but they're just uprooting the whole street. And if somebody's walking on the street at night, and it's dark, and they trip over those roots, we're going to have some liability. So there's a couple of areas, if any of you see any of those areas, there's a couple around town where there's huge trees on the person's property, but the roots are now bubbling up in the road, in the roadway. Yeah.
Josh?
I'd like to add one to the list. Some people up in Depot Hill have basically told me the same thing. So a couple of questions. I brought this to the council with the council's agreement, and one thing that came up in my campaign was, and after the campaign, was the whole issue of people taking out trees, and then the neighbors feeling rather reluctant to complain. Some people feeling that their name would now become public to a neighbor that has up till now been a good friend, but they did, you know, really want those trees to be there and not taken out. So I was wondering if right now... So I was wondering if right now you could explain the code in terms of when a person wants to bring to the city's attention about a tree that's been removed.
Sure. So for trees, like any other code complaint that we receive, we do not accept anonymous complaints. We do require that the complaint identify themselves, primarily for the purpose that we have somebody that we can follow up with. If we have questions about the nature of the violation, it's very helpful to know who that person is. However, we do maintain their confidentiality, and we would do so until ordered by a court to release their information.
Okay, so it's highly unlikely that someone who's complaining about a tree removal would ever be found out about at all?
The city wouldn't divulge their identity.
Okay. Okay. And how much... What are the fines for people that remove trees? How do you determine that, and how high can they go? Can you give us some examples if there's a variance?
So the code gives us a little bit of flexibility. I have the discretion to set a fine. There's also a provision to use a tree guide that's put out by the American Arborist Association that sets values for trees. In my judgment, it sort of tries to put a quantitative value on a qualitative subject, and it's a little bit tricky to prepare those. And depending on the age and size and specimen of the tree, those can range anywhere from, you know, a couple thousand dollars into the hundreds of thousands of dollars if it's something that, you know, you couldn't go down to a nursery and purchase. And sometimes that's problematic. We're certainly not going to fine somebody a few hundred thousand dollars. So we do have to exercise a lot of judgment, try to be fair, and it's challenging sometimes to be consistent and keep everything within reason.
Okay. Would you say by and large, the people in Capitola are respectful of the tree ordinance, and there's very few unpermitted removals?
That's been my experience. Like I said, we probably get two to four violations annually. In the last two years, I think we've had three.
Okay, so that's pretty good.
Yeah. Now, there may be some that we never hear about, but those are the ones that have been reported.
Okay. Actually, I recently had a complaint about two weeks ago, and then I got reminded about it, probably because it's on the agenda. Someone was commenting about the trees that, in the vicinity of the Rissman Mansion, that are overhanging Wharf Road, and they're up against the fence and causing the fence to sag. They're worried about that being a danger. So I went by and checked it out, and sure enough, there's quite a few trees that are overhanging, probably near where the library is. So it'd be great if you have that checked out. Oh, Steve's coming up. Okay, looks like you know about it.
Yeah, I was just going to address those trees in particular. They're acacia trees. They lean and are naturally that way. And the existing conservation easements at the Rissman property prohibit us from removing those trees until they're fallen eminently due to fall. And we've had them checked out by arborists, and no arborist will sign off on them to that they're about to fall.
Are we allowed to trim them?
What?
Can we trim them?
Reduce the head weight?
We can't... I have to go back and read the agreement, to be honest with you. I know we tried to remove them. We did manage to remove one that was the roots that started coming up, but in general, we're dealing with the trees on the Rissman about as hard as dealing with the rest of that property.
They're considered a windbreak for the butterfly habitat.
Yeah.
That's why they're like that.
Well, it seems like an impending disaster for the unlucky motors that comes by there when the tree falls.
They've been that way for several years now, so I concur, but so far, we have not been successful in getting a removal from those.
Okay. So that brings up another thing. Thanks, Steve. So in the rewrite, I have no particular love of protecting eucalyptus and acacia. I have no problem replacing it with native trees. So on the rewrite, if you could look into that aspect, I'd really appreciate that. I don't know what the city council members would agree, so, you know, we could talk about it at that point. But we did have an acacia tree in our backyard that slowly tipped and went up against the building, caused a lot of damage to the building, and also, after the building, it caused a lot of dam... A lot of sparks and such like that to the power lines behind us, and they actually had to come out and remove it. So I'm in no love of those trees either. There's a mention of an inventory of historic trees. Do we have such an inventory of historic trees?
So the ordinance does provide a nomination process for heritage trees. So to best of my knowledge, there's never been a list adopted by the city council. I found an old list that was drafted and researched, but I don't think it's ever been adopted. So to the best of my knowledge, there are no designated heritage trees in Capitola.
It was controversial when it came to us, and property owners came and said, "No, it's my tree. If I want to apply to cut it down or to not save it, you know, I want to have that ability to do that." And it was very... But we can always go back and discuss it again.
We made a very comprehensive list.
Yeah. But we can always revisit that if we find that there are some good way to have a heritage tree ordinance that can preserve these heritage trees without, you know, the community just coming and glued and not supporting that. So I mean, we would have to see if there's enough support in the community to do that. Again, at that time, there wasn't quite enough support.
And we haven't really...
Some people said yes, some people... A lot of people said no. It's my tree, I want to take it down.
And we've been able to address it by the hearings for the planning commission, for the tree permit. So it's not hard to recognize a significant tree when it comes to us, and it hasn't caused any problems.
Okay.
Okay. I would have to agree with Jacques about the eucalyptus, but I don't think we give people too much trouble with that one. Except maybe along the cliffs where the Coastal Commission gets involved and the butterflies.
Well, nobody asked us to cut them down because it's so expensive to cut one of those big things down, you know? Maybe we ought to provide a fund to cut them down.
Not yet, but I think a house just changed hands on Escalona that has a significant number of eucalyptus trees, you're going to see some permit applications come in.
Yeah.
Anybody who comes up with that much money likes me.
And I wouldn't be... I would not mind if you didn't ask them to replace them with something. Just the public safety. I mean, like neighbors along Park Avenue told most of us, I'm sure on this board, of the eucalyptus trees that have fallen in the past and crushed cars and stuff like that. So it's a real problem with those trees.
We've had Monterey pines also on my street. We had four of them one year that fell right down, one a couple on a house, and the other on cars.
Yep, it happens with them, too.
They just have shallow roots, too, I guess.
Yep, yep. Thanks for your point, and I look forward to the rewrite.
Is there any members of the public who'd like to address us on this issue? Please step over.
I always thought that eucalyptus was a weed.
Not native.
It's not native.
It's not native. It's Australian. It was brought in way in the 20s down in Orange County.
It was brought in by the railroads.
Yeah, as a windbreak.
Yes.
And how did it turn into a tree?
Well, it did because the fact that it is now a monarch butterfly habitat. Eucalyptus on the backside of Depot Hill is all monarch butterfly habitat. You cannot touch it. The eucalyptus that are on the Rissman property are a butterfly habitat. So the butterflies moved in, and so that became their habitat, along with milkweed.
Oh, great, okay.
I'd like to tell the story. Tell the story.
Is there any other members of the public who'd like to address us on this issue? Okay, I want to bring it back to council, and we can all discuss this thing. You know, we even regulate yucca plants. I'm serious. If you have a six-inch base on a yucca plant, it becomes a tree. And really, it falls in really of a bush line in it, and the same thing with palm trees. There should be a strong look at what is included in the list and not included.
Cypress.
My personally, my biggest issue is this thing. I don't think the fine for removing an illegal tree is steep enough. And I think two, couple ways you can strengthen it, and this happened after two instances, the one on Hill Street, which we'll never forget, and the one that happened in SoCal Creek that we'll never forget. Significant, significant trees. And one of them was done to make a property more valuable so the guy could build a residence there. That's why it happened. He sold the lot, it's being built as a residence over the top of it. So, Tony, maybe you can look at this. What kind of regulation can we put on the removal of a significant tree that may be qualified as a heritage tree from an area and holding anyone accountable for a period of 10 years or 15 years from never developing on that same site? Or to replant, or to replant and to hold that property? So you don't do it for your own personal gain and development, because the $2,000 fine to make a half a million dollars a lot was a small investment for that person.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, you recall that these incidents actually sparked the ordinance amendment that we did, I think it was in 2011.
2011.
And so previously, the maximum fine in the ordinance, if I remember correctly, was a $5,000 per tree. And so that was the maximum that was levied in this instance you're referencing. The new language does permit, if that situation had been replicated with the language we have today, it would have been a six-figure fine. So I think, you know, the issue that you called out, if someone were to take down a 200-foot-tall redwood in the middle of town that everyone knows and loves, yes, there can be a six-figure fine now under your current ordinance. Your second piece of the question, I'll have to defer to the city attorney about putting sort of a moratorium on that property after the fact. I'm not sure about that.
Right, and the mayor and I discussed this a little bit before the meeting, and I agreed to look into it further, but the two concepts that we discussed were, one, either placing some sort of time limit on using the property for another purpose where it's clear that a tree was removed to make way for development, that sort of thing. Another one was to require replanting of a substantial-sized or valued tree, but in the same location where the tree was removed from, rather than just on the same property. And I think that has a deterrent value, but it's something that I have to research and report back to the council on.
Just for a point of reference, look at the picture behind Rich right here, what Depot Hill used to look like, that painter. Maybe that was before there was houses up there. Okay. Questions of staff? Are we ready to make a motion, or what are we...
All right.
Okay.
I'll leave the motion to someone?
Yeah.
Oh, I was going to move this staff for a recommendation.
Second. Okay, with the amendment that we asked council to look into the possibility of putting some type of deed restriction on property that takes out a significant...
Pending research.
Pending research. And no restrictions on eucalyptus removal.
I'm happy to research that and report back to you.
Thank you, thank you. So we have a motion?
A second?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So move. Okay, we move to item 9E, and that is a designation of voting delegate in alternance to the 2015 League of California Cities Annual Conference, to be held in San Jose September 30th of this year through October 2nd. Is there any volunteers for this?
I volunteer.
Okay. Anyone else like to be a delegate?
I'll be an alternate.
Okay.
There we go.
We can have two alternates if somebody else wants to go. Mike, you're not busy.
I'm fine. I'll watch.
You should go at least once, huh?
They have it at the very end of the meeting on Friday afternoon at like 2:00, 3:00, when everybody wants to leave. Keeps you there if you want to vote, you're really...
I have gone to that meeting, though, once, and it is very informative.
Yes.
Sometimes they're controversial and really interesting, and sometimes they're more housekeeping items. Just depends on the year.
Okay, so we have Jacques as being our primary representative and Stephanie being his alternate, and they will go to the... As the voting delegate gets for the city to the League of California Cities meeting in September. Thank you. Does that conclude our meeting tonight?
One minute.
Yes, discussion.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I was going to ask for a report on the arsenic contamination out at the McGurger site, and I decided to put it off and would like to have our DPW manager to do it at some later date. So I understand that's holding up the completion of that park. A lot of people have asked me, obviously in my neighborhood, about that, and so I think it's appropriate we get a report as to what's going on.
Okay.
Thanks.
You know, ironically, we went through the same thing with the purchase of a rail recorder. Arsenic is natural in our environment, and it just so happens that when you study it, it becomes an issue. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can we get to the next meeting?
It may be possible, next meeting. We are... We're getting... We're trying to refine our options for moving forward, and it may make more sense to wait till the second meeting in July. It just depends.